I'd like to welcome everybody to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It is Monday, March 5th, 2018. The time is 9:04. If everybody could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
First order of business, we have an appointment to the IC- I- I- sixty-nine Steering Committee. Mr. Walker.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, in front of you, we passed a resolution for the I- sixty-nine Steering Committee. Uh, I need an appointment from Delaware County, and that's what we're here to look for today.
I believe it was Mr. Henry, don't you think?
Mr. King would be good for that job. I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. King.
Thanks.
I'll second that.
Dave, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Under table business, we have the Yorktown Public Library Board and the Medicaid for Inmates Agreement. We don't have anything yet for the Public Library Board. John, you had anything else on the Medicaid for the inmates?
I'm still working on that.
Okay, we'll just leave those table. We'll move on to approval of minutes for February 20th.
I still move.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll have a presentation to Commissioners from Ashton Land Surveyor for Mansfield Edition.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kathy. I'm Ashton- I'm Kathy Van Nuys from Ashton Land Surveyor at 325 West Washington Street, Muncie. Um, the reason we're here is we have a plat that we have that borders Highway 28, sorry. Um, and because of the thoroughfare plan, we have to donate or dedicate 20 feet of the property to the Commissioners. The state pop- state highway plans only go 30 feet, so we have an additional 20 feet that we have to, uh, for the thoroughfare plan placed in the Commissioners' name.
Is this something new? I mean, did we?
We've done it before. It's just part of the thoroughfare plan. Uh, the road is to be wider than what the state has, and so we're setting it aside for future, and the Commissioners put on it.
Thank you. I take it this is going through the plat committee and all that?
It has, and it has. That's where I am right now. I have it all signed and ready to go, but this is just one more step.
Okay. Is Marta out there?
As she should be.
I'm part of the plat committee, and it was approved.
Okay.
It was based on our suggestions.
All right, and they recommended this?
Yes.
So we just need to make a motion.
Yes, make a motion to accept.
Some level.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, All Steel Carports, Michael Burton.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Burton. I am the Executive Assistant to the President of All Steel Carports, Ignacio Chavez, who, uh, is joining me here today along with Kathy from Ashton, who will be presenting something briefly to you. Over a year ago, All Steel Carports purchased property in Park One off of 332 for the project of building a new manufacturing and sales facility there. We've yet to move the first shovel of dirt. Uh, after a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Marta and with Jake Julian of Economic Development, we were suggested to come here before you and ask that you consider abandoning the portion of Jackson Street that joins our property off of 332. Uh, we intend to provide for the Commissioners through Angie Maurey, uh, who will provide you with a traffic count, I believe, that will be finished up maybe by the middle of the week, and then she'll be able to make her recommendation based on the traffic count. Our attorney, John Cork, will also be prepared to handle the deed work that needs to be done should you grant such an approval to us. We've invited Kelly to come today, uh, to present the scope of the project of what we're doing and show you the portion of Jackson Street that's actually in play here. And both Ignacio and myself and Kathy would be available for any questions for you afterwards. We thank you for your consideration. I'll turn it over to you.
Again, okay, on this, I know, I hope you have the maps and fun I do, but we would like to only keep it in the borders of what Ignacio owns. In other words, we don't want to, we only want to vacate from the, his west boundary to his east boundary, and we have looked into it. Um, all the property owners that are border on the north have access via different ways. The only one that might have a little problem would be Richard Howe, and it's only because there's a creek he owns to the north, and he has access through the county road that runs north-south, um, which is, what is that? I forgot the county road, 875? 875, okay. He has access on, but there is a creek that might make it difficult for him to afford this piece of woods, so we could still give him an ingress egress coming from the east or any west. Other than that, everyone has access and does use access from a different route than not using this piece of Jackson Street. Kathy, remember we talked about first, like, 200 feet entrance to keep that public? Right. So the, the property on the west side would still have access if they would ever go? That's what I'm saying. I'm only staking, sticking with the northwest corner of Ignacio's property, so we're keeping that access so that, um, Ox Farm Realty can still have access on the west side. Thank you.
But the sides would say that it's now from 332 that it's just.
Well, then the entrance would still be public, this part, because there's a lot right here.
Oh, okay.
This Ox Farm, and that's their only way to access their way.
So they could get to that.
You can see like a little gravel drive home back to that direction.
Well, I, I drove it yesterday, and I did notice that on the north side, the creek is kind of worse than up there.
Really bad, yes.
Yeah, so I'll have to be improving that.
Commissioners, Brad Bookout, Delaware County Economic Development, just wanted to let you know, I did have a good conversation with, uh, uh, Michael last week, and, uh, we'll be waiting on the traffic, uh, count numbers from Angie. After that comes, we'll be with you as to a recommendation, and, uh, other than any questions, uh, I appreciate All Steel being here today.
Yes, I do, too.
Thank you.
And I, I hope have the traffic count stand by until this week. We've done it prior, but due to the weather, the counter's malfunction. Um, also, um, Marta and I met with Pete Olson and Hal Ashton, and, because we want to include Pete because Mount Pleasant is consolidated, and Pete was in favor of this as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Structure Point, Andrew Everhart.
Morning.
Morning.
My name's Andrew Everhart. I'm the Principal Consultant, uh, in IT Division of American Structure Point out of Indianapolis. Um, we provided you an IT assessment that we delivered, um, towards the beginning of the year, and follow-up to that assessment, uh, we had a proposal to address the recommendations that we made in that assessment. Uh, the idea is to work with this group to, um, help address the items that we identified of high importance. Um, thought for budgetary reasons, it would probably be best to divide it into phases. Um, that way, we can tackle most important pieces first, and then, uh, hopefully, we can get that done in the next 12 to 18 months and address the remaining items in 2019 and after that, and then, so Phase Four would be ongoing facilitator services at, if needed, uh, by the Commissioners, so the IT Department, uh, kind of on, on-call basis.
Just to kind of be the overseer?
Yes.
John, if you?
It was just laid on my desk when I came in. Sit down here, so I have.
So we, we can make a decision in our next?
Yes.
Yeah, T's and C's are the same as they were in the, uh, other report that we did as well.
We'll have our attorney looking over, and we'll.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we'll move on to contracts and agreements for approval. We have, uh, Highway Department annual material bids. Everybody got their tabulation sheets?
Yeah. Wish the print was a little bit bigger.
Robert Jesse with Delaware County Highway Department. Uh, I recommend that we accept all the material bids like we have in the past. Um, reason being, depending on where we're at, it's, it's cheaper for us to just pay a little more than it is to drive across again. The Eaton Albany Pike project, uh, been over the contract and approach instruction that it's more going to go with.
They're a long time.
First, Brooks.
You, uh, want to go ahead and do a motion on, uh, material bid first?
I do have a question, though. On the, um, the material, do we go with the lowest? They have to meet the lowest bid price or what?
Actually, um, with regard to materials, and what Mr. Jesse said, and this has been consistent for a number of years, is you accept all the proposals, and that's the price that they, uh, charge unless there's some escalators in the bid itself. That way, if the county, uh, is near one of the bidders that's a little bit higher, it's cheaper to, to get, let's say, the diesel fuel from that supplier as opposed to driving all the way over to the other side of the county to get, save a few cents. They're, they're within a few cents of each other, so this is pretty consistent to accept all of them, um, but they're locked into those prices.
I was thinking it was mostly the paving crew that would be buying the materials.
Even on the paving, if, if I'm on the south end of the county, it costs me more money to drive to the north side.
I understand, I appreciate that, but I just wasn't aware that they'd get their, what they bid.
Right, they're locked into that particular price.
Okay.
Unless there's some escalator in the bid itself.
Okay. Max, not even a big action.
I'll make a motion, we accept all the material bids from County Hammer.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll have the one for the Eaton Albany Pike paving bid.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Brooks bid for the Albany Pike.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Angie, you'll, um, put together the contracts, and we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I'll use the one you developed for, um, and get back to you.
All right, great.
Next, we have interlocal agreement for Pete's Bar and Grill.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Bookout, Delaware County Economic Development. Um, this is a project that's special to Albany, Indiana. Um, it was identified that Pete's, uh, what was formerly known as Pete's Duck Inn, uh, it's a regional attraction to Albany, Indiana. Been there for a long time. Uh, what started out as a dive bar turned into something where people recognize and identify with, with Albany, Indiana. Uh, with that being said, the business has been sold to a new owner who is here today, who I'm going to let Caleb speak in just a minute. Um, upon purchasing the project, uh, through your, uh, support and through the town's support, we met with, uh, the folks, the new owners. Uh, we realized that their investment's going to be nearly seventy, $700,000 to remodel and to, uh, revamp the facility. They are adding a family dining component to it. Uh, they are also taking it from approximately 12 to 15 jobs up to 28 jobs, uh, some part-time, some full-time, cook servers, et cetera. Um, one of the things that we're, we're really concerned about was adequate infrastructure to the facility, namely water, sewer. We'd like to see the parking lot paved since it's on a state highway. We'd also like to see some, uh, landscaping, so aesthetically, it looks nice along the highway, so it's attractive in Albany. Uh, through that, uh, there is an interlocal agreement for your approval today. I know maybe Mr. Brooke is going to address that, uh, but, long story short, uh, this is a good project. Uh, the total contribution is $105,000 from the county towards the infrastructure, and, uh, I'll let Caleb tell you all the good stuff they're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, this is a project that, uh, you know, when we first started talking to Pete, um, as most of you have all been to Pete's Duck Inn formerly, um, you know, um, what I've realized at the beginning of this was how important this place is to Albany itself. Um, you know, and we changed the name, we got a little feedback from, um, the locals, um, we're losing the duck, you know, and part of that to me was, when Pete bought it, the duck was important. When we bought it, Pete was important. So, we decided to lose the duck and keep the Pete. Um, you know, we, we do want to rebrand it as, as ours, but pay homage to what Pete has built over 30 years. Um, you know, the, the, the investment that we put into it, um, started out with just a gut and a remodel, and after an engineer take a look at the place, they said, no, this whole side of the building has to come down. Uh, so we've basically taken almost two-thirds of the building, completely torn it down, and rebuilt the structure. Um, if you've been out there, you've seen our progress, it's been very, very quick. Um, we've tried our hardest to use as many local contractors as possible, um, to even a painter who was a regular, is a regular, at the, at the establishment. Um, you know, it was very important to me, as I go into ownership, that I want a job where I can bring my kids. My kids can come in on a Saturday if my wife needs to do something, and they can be there. It'll be the first job I've ever had that I can just have my kids come to work with me, and, and I don't have to worry about them. So, you know, I'm, I'm excited to have that. Um, the town of Albany, the feedback we have been getting is astronomical. I mean, it's, 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 it's really, uh, humbling to me, as I've, for the last month, I kind of went in and worked the nights and stuff, and I saw what, what this place means to Albany. Um, and it wasn't just Albany, it's people from Ohio and people from Muncie and Anderson and, and Marion, um, that this is a place of friendship and family and, and love, and I, I'm looking forward to, you know, I stood up that last night, and Pete made me say some words, um, and I, and I said that, you know, I'm looking forward to, hopefully, I pray to God in 30 years, I'm, I'm in Pete's same shoes. Um, you know, it's, it's some big shoes to fill with me trying to be Pete, I guess. Um, but, um, you know, I've got a longstanding relationship, and especially in Muncie, as being a chef, um, I've taken that next step into being an owner. Um, you know, and, you know, we've, I've done a lot of different things to change the place. Um, we, it's, it's basically a brand-new restaurant. I mean, it really is. Um, we're looking forward to, uh, we added a patio that'll seat 40 people. The inside will seat anywhere between 90-ish to 99-ish. Um, you know, so there's a lot of things that are going on that, that'll be bringing a bigger attraction to Albany, um, a- as we get this beautification project going. It's actually already underway, uh, but curbs, sidewalks, uh, safety structures so that nobody can run into the building, um, you know, actual good drainage for the, uh, the parking lot itself. Um, but I appreciate you having us here today, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, so.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
So Caleb doesn't realize it, but his new name is Pete, so.
[laughing]
There's, uh, in your packet, I know you have detailed plans for the structure of what they're completing. You have a detailed parking lot plan. You have a detailed landscaping plan. Um, everything is quoted there, showing their total investment and where we're at. Uh, there is a resolution, uh, that I think you have a copy of, and also a, uh, development agreement and interlocal agreement.
We have it involved in preparing the interlocal agreement, um, and the development agreement on this for the redevelopment commission, and, um, I think that we circulated the final draft, so everything is in order.
I'll make a motion, we approve the interlocal and the development agreement for this project.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Kathy, did it, uh, Mr. Brooks, do they need to approve the resolution as well?
Yes, they should.
Okay.
The resolution basically is the statement of your policy to approve that, so.
Have a move of the resolution.
Yeah.
What number is it?
What's down here?
There's a resolution with that.
Do it later.
Resolution 2018 dash zero one.
One, two. I'll make a motion, we approve that resolution.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Thank you. Anything else?
Did he bring any menus up or anything?
They'll have frog legs at the next meeting.
Oh, I've never eaten the frog legs, then.
Next, we have a development agreement with Big Time Barbell.
Commissioners, Brad Bookout, again. Uh, this is a, it's an interesting project. This is not the, the type of typical project that, uh, we see with economic development on a daily basis. Um, these guys who I'm about to introduce, uh, have done some things and have, have crossed some bridges and have gone down a road that I've watched them evolve, uh, for the last 18 months. And during that time, uh, they first came to, to me, to the Economic Development Office, and said, what, what do we need to do? And I, I said, well, let's meet with the Small Business Development Center and put together a business plan. So they did that. I said, let's, let's set up a not-for-profit status. They did that. Let's apply for an EIN number. Let's do that. Let's have some fundraisers. They did that. They raised money. They put together a financial plan. It's just, this project has literally just caught fire with Big Time Barbell. Um, the goal of the Big Time Barbell project is to assist with, uh, recovering addicts within our community. That's the overarching goal. There are, is funding that you've set aside with your edit plan for that, and, uh, I, we're to a point now, I've worked with your legal counsel to put together a development agreement so that this project and this program can officially be launched in Delaware County and be available, not only for, uh, those who have addiction substance abuse issues who are wishing to improve their lives, but also with a special focus on veterans as well. So, um, with that, I'm, I'm thrilled to introduce Mac Hines, uh, and also Nick Albertson.
Thank you for having us today. Um, I want to come over just a little list of, of accomplishments, 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 and, um, um, show how the support has, um, gained momentum, um, from this point, from the spring until this point. So, I just got a little, a, a few little things that I want to mention. Like Brad said, in, in the spring of 2017, we came to him, and, um, through his direction as well as Bill Waters, um, they helped us with the necessary steps to get our, um, corporation and additional funding for this project as we go along. Uh, we were able to obtain our incorporation nonprofit status, um, pro bono with the help from Leslie Matthews and, Matthews and Law. Um, we were able to create a five-year financial plan with the help of Scott Underwood from the East Central Indiana Small Business Development Center. Um, during this whole time, we had talked off and on with you Commissioners. I did a presentation early into the ventures, and, and we felt like that we've had continued support from the Commissioners. Um, we obtained support, um, and partnerships with Brian Bell for Road Redemption. We want to keep an open mind to several different types of, of rehabilitation, um, for the addicts. So, um, Blood and Fire, um, local nonprofit donated, uh, probably $25,000 worth of gym equipment, that they were refocusing some things. They were going to do some, um, kind of an idea close to that, and they decided to refocus, so they donated all the equipment that they purchased from Ball State. We attained networking partnerships with the Delaware County Veterans Affairs, um, because we had that special focus with the veterans as well. Big Time Barbell then led a successful drive for Delaware County EMA and the veterans during the hurricane relief. Um, we've, we were able to fill every, um, ambulance center that Delaware County has. Uh, we filled it to the rim with supplies, so it just shows the support that we, some of the support that we had from the community. Um, we've received, um, financial support from the Labor's International Union of North America, um, here locally. Um, then we did our first inaugural bowling tournament, which we were able to raise over $3,800 for that. We obtained support from the Delaware County Sheriff's Department, as well as the Eaton Police Department. We gained support through Judge Feig's Drug Court, um, with a commitment of referrals to Big Time Barbell. We were chosen from a list of nonprofits to participate in websites through the night, um, put on by Dustin Humm of E-Keeper Systems, a IT firm. During that, they build us a website, um, that tells about Big Time Barbell, gives calendars, so it's a solid, um, website. And during that challenge, they do a challenge for one week to raise funds for that nonprofit. We were able to raise over $1,400 in a seven-day period there. Uh, we won that website through-the-night challenge. We received the most donations in that week's time. We joined, uh, CBC, which is a local networking group, that where we've gained a ton of support. Um, the people and business owners there have, um, they're on the list of, of things that I want to mention. Um, we also agreed to a community partnership with Culvers of Muncie. Um, we're going to do a, um, community partnership about every three months, where Big Time Barbell's going to serve some food, clean tables. During those time periods of those three months, they're going to donate up to 20% of their sales. We were able to obtain a commercial retail building spot for, um, a low-priced lease, which we had looked at several properties. We looked at several properties from the county. This is a really nice spot that's already, um, in good shape, and it's in a commercial retail, um, area. For the price we were looking to spend, um, we were in warehouse space on some of the may not, uh, so attractive parts of, of Muncie. Um, Troy Wise helped us, um, attain that. He's the owner, so he's agreed to a low, um, term lease, as well as to take care of the property taxes. We were able to, um, obtain support and financial commitments from Robertson Insurance, um, as well as a pledge of $2,000 from Pizza King of Indiana. We obtained support and financial commitment of $3,000 for renovations to this project from Slade Neil and Family with G and G Oil. We attained support and commitment of supplies for our renovation project from Lowe's Home Improvement. During our fundraiser efforts with Walk, Walk My Own My Shoes, we were able to obtain commitments of referrals from the Muncie Mission. We obtained commitments and referrals from Walnut Commons. We attained support and commitment from Corson of Muncie that's going to donate fire extinguishers to our building. Um, we obtained support from Skyrocket Media that showed their support through, um, donating signage for our property. And Schwer Electric has committed to any help with the electrical or inspections as well. So Big Time Barbell is committed to continuing our network and fundraising efforts and improving the lives in our community. We want to give recognition to all these businesses and individuals that showed support and recognize our efforts to help our community, and we want to give a special thanks to you Commissioners for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks for what you guys are doing. It's great. Appreciate it.
So Commissioners, with your approval of the development agreement, uh, we'll, uh, be the final leg of, uh, literally Mac's journey, uh, with this project, and we'll be able to get him up and going so this project can be kicked off and they can get underway with the project. So I know he's got a lot of, uh, friends, family, supporters here today in the audience, um, and, uh, we appreciate your support to see this project happen.
I make a motion, we approve the agreement with Big Time Barbell.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Well, keep us updated on the open house and all of it, okay?
Well, thank you. Love to come out and see you. Next, we have ordinance for second re- Next, we have ordinance for second reading, ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero zero three, ordinance to amend an ordinance regulating traffic on certain public streets in Delaware County.
This is to establish two four-way stops, one on Old Bramble Road at Blacksmill Road and the other at County Road 700 South at County Road 300 East. I've not received any comments or questions. This has been advertising newspaper.
Had their events and accidents out, their close calls.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero zero three.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call her please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution number twenty eighteen dash zero eleven, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of County of Delaware, Indiana, of a final determination concerning vacant parcels not sold in a tax sale.
Good morning, Commissioners. Janet Kessler, Tax Sale Deputy in the Auditor's Office. If you will notice on your resolution Exhibit A, there is four parcels on this list that we need to have a drawing. We have multiple people interested in it, so we can do that now prior to your approval. The first one is West Orangewood Drive, a Vicky Wallace, a Samuel and Allison Frye, and a Jeffrey and Lola Wullem are in the drawing. Who wants to draw?
She's closer.
Vicky Wallace.
Zicky Wallace.
The next one is three oh five North State Street. And we have a Charles Slaven and an Albert Eller that is interested in this parcel.
Albert Eller.
The next one is five oh seven South Elliott, and we have a Michael Woodring and a Laura Hare that is interested in this parcel.
Laura Hare.
And the last one is South County Road 762 East, and I have a Jeremy Harland and a Jacqueline Buchanan that is interested.
Jeremy and Ruth Harland.
Commissioners, we are asking for your approval on the resolution. We have sixty-one parcels that we're working on putting back on the tax rolls.
Resolution twenty eighteen dash one.
I'll second it.
Have a motion of second.
Jerry, can you speak up a little bit louder when you make your motions because I can't?
Well, um, that resolution, yes.
Steve, can you call her please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. Good news.
Next, we move to department heads and elected officials.
I have some things for the commissioners. First of all, with regard to the jail project, I need the commissioners to make a motion to authorize the preparation of a request for a proposal for a public-private project pursuant to IC five point three dash five. We will put together this RFP for your review and consideration at the next meeting.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call her please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Second thing is the county council, their meeting on the twenty-seventh, adopted a resolution to move forward with the purchase of some real estate, their thirty-one hundred south Tilletson. According to statute, the commissioners need to make appointment of two appraisers who have to then submit their appraisals within thirty days of the date of appointment. So that'd be on the fourth April fifth, if you make the appointment today. I would recommend that you use appraisers Roger Miller and Nick Tillma. Both have been used by the county in the past with several projects, most notably on Morrison Road, on some sidewalk projects and all those projects out of Delville. So we have familiarity with them. I've checked with both of them and they both have the ability to get this done within thirty days. We checked with others that were so busy that they couldn't get it done. So these two have represented and told us that they can get it done within thirty days.
I'll make a motion to use both those appraisers.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call her please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
You have a copy of the engagement letter for Mr. Miller. I did send that last night. I apologize. I was catching up on the email. If you could go ahead and sign that and then grant the president the authority to sign Mr. Tillma's when I receive that in the next day or two so we can get this process going. So what I would request is a motion to approve Roger Miller's and also a motion to grant the president the authority to sign the contract for the other appraiser when it's available.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call her please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Another thing I have is I sent to all of you an extension of the collective bargain agreement with the UAW for the sheriff deputies, jailers of the nine-one-one. It expired at the end of February. I'm asking, excuse me, for an extension through April second. We have several bargaining sessions coming up and hopefully we get this done or we don't have to extend it again.
I'll make a motion to approve the extension.
Second.
Motion of second. Steve, can you call her please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I think we have two other matters involving some real estate that have contacted the Commissioner's Office about some real estate that's owned by the county, adjacent property owners want to take care of that. I think one of them is in the audience here today. The proper process would be to offer to both adjacent property owners because we've got to jump through the statute, we've got to satisfy the statute. If the other property owner is vacant or is not there, then we can make that, you can make that appointment for those properties, but we've got to follow the statute. So that's what I would recommend that we do for, I think there's one thirteen West Fifth Street and there's another one up in Eaton. Is that right, Jenny?
Yes, and he's here today. The other one called this morning and he forgot about the time, so he's going to come to us.
Okay. So what I'm going to recommend is that we put those off so that we can make the offer to both, all the adjacent property owners. And if they don't have any interest, then you can make the award. Okay?
Okay. I agree with that. It is a proper process.
Yep. That's all that I have.
All that you have. Any other department head, public official?
Paul Singleton, Director of Delaware County nine-one-one. Most everyone's aware that on February twenty-seventh of this year, there was a horrific accident at Willing-Gaston Pike at nine fifty north. Just want to talk a little bit about what happened behind the scenes when that all goes on. At three twenty-one, the phone system at nine-one-one literally blew up with calls about this accident. Our dispatchers took care of getting the property units headed that way, started that way. Once she was arrived, they admittedly started calling for more first responders, ambulances, police officers, anyone who was available. And I just want to talk about how everything worked. The dispatch force of it, I'll get back to that. But the responding agencies responded with no complaints, with no hesitation. You had units that came from all over the county to assist. What happens when that does, if there's an incident in the county like that? Typically, the city police department will spread out a little bit and they'll take some of the load of the county. The small towns will spread out and take some of the load in the county. Indiana State Police was contacted. They offered assistance. So everyone worked together very well. That particular day, I had a very young dispatch crew working. My supervisor has four years on. I have one person that had more than ten years of experience working. The rest were all three years and below with one having nine months. So I got a letter from the afternoon shift supervisor who wanted to recognize them for their work. That day, we had a year and a half employee who was training on, who was continuing her training, working on the Delaware County Council. And she's been there a couple weeks now, but she's not used to the kind of load that happens when an incident like this happens. She jumped in, she had a training officer that was there with her. They both were flawless. You had another year and a half employee who was working EMS, who was able to get all the units started. And it's more than that. They, when an incident like this happens, they're sort of playing chess. They have to take turns and they have to start moving people around, moving responders and resources around to make sure everything's covered. If Muncie sends a unit up there, someone has to cover for Muncie. If Delaware County sends all of their ambulances that way, the small towns and the volunteer EMS units start covering, they're territory. So the system we have in place works. Is it perfect? By no means, it's not perfect. A three-year employee was working and she had to manage what was going on with the radio traffic and the phone traffic and managed two air ambulances that were as well. So there's a lot going on here. So basically, the afternoon supervisor commanded the entire shift for being quick and efficient and working together well. In the middle of this, an hour into the call, there was a working house fire. So now our fire dispatcher is also trying to manage everything else going on. And there's a fire, working house fire, structure fire going on, which requires volunteer fire units because it was out in the county. Other ambulances had to be, had to find them, get them there. So it's just a big puzzle that's going on. And I am lax about commending these folks. But this is a normal response for our nine-one-one dispatch people. We had a hundred and eighty-three thousand calls for service last year. Granted, this is not a typical day, but this is a day that happens more frequently than people imagine. James and Shannon, YouTubeing and public safety, you know what goes on, how it can be busy. But the general public has no idea of what goes on behind the scenes. So I just wanted to share with you how the system we have in place works and it works well. And I don't do this near as often as I should because I expect these from, I expect this type of performance from these people because I get it. We are very fortunate to have the building we have, the equipment we have, and the people we have. But we're also fortunate that we have first responder and public safety agencies that also respond and they do things without question. So I just want to commend the afternoon shift. The people that were working that day, Adam Garrett, Brittany Rowe, John Miller, Sarah Abssinger, Cliff Rhodes, Carly Watson, and supervisor was Jeanne Ferris. So I want to publicly commend them, but also want to commend all of our dispatchers for the work that they do there. As I've talked about before, everything that happens in Delaware County, public safety-wise, first responder, it either begins there or we touch it in some form or fashion. So I just thank you for the support that the commissioners have for us and everything that you've done for us.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, Paul, thanks for bringing that to our attention and for you realizing that we do need to do more appreciations.
A lot of people don't understand the multitasking that goes on up there at nine-one-one and the people that we have worked with.
And as always, I would invite the public to come in and see what we do, you know, invite the commissioners in to see what we do. County Council, you know, they have an open invitation at all times to come and see what we do, but just to try and see what we do from time to time.
Extend our appreciation to them, please.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else?
We have a report from Waits and Majors, moved payment of claims at an amount of eight-hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine dollars and thirty-three cents.
Second.
Motion of second for payment of claims. Steve, can you call her please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Now we'll take questions or comments from the public.
My name is Jim Redarcia, and it's been a long time since I've seen all of the commissioners or been at one of these meetings. But I've been working a lot with the people in every county and I've seen a lot of the things that are going on there. And there seems to be an underlying theme here to pigeonhole all of the East Central Indiana counties together under one blanket model, which includes population loss. And Delaware County is the final prize. This involves aggressively promoting industrial wind complexes and combined feeding operations. Be advised that if you haven't already, you will soon be enticed to join yet another economic development group despite having all of these we already have in the county that are very effective right now. Just wanted to give you a heads up on what's going on in some of the other counties. The other thing I'd like to do is to thank you for hosting the community meeting at the Fairgrounds on Thursday at six PM on the industrial confined feeding operations. Everyone in this county needs to be educated on the implications of this as it will affect every property owner in Delaware County. Everyone in the county needs to know what's going on to understand what this involves. The county needs your protection, whether that takes the form of a moratorium, a ban, or some other action. And I appreciate everything you're doing. We need to educate what's going on. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the commissioners' reference before Thursday's meeting, this is an information that I've collected. Did I hit, did I get it right?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, you got it right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Irving, and I too want to thank you for having the meeting on this Thursday night. I did have a couple questions about that. I guess I was wondering about the format. Do we need to get there early to sign in? Or how are you going to be doing that regarding speakers? Do you know yet?
There will be a sign-in sheet for people to sign in. The commissioners have talked about having a format that those in favor and those against each side would have forty-five minutes to make their presentation. If they're a person that's kind of the spokesperson, they would get a little more time, and generally, comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The commissioners would request that repetitive comments, people come up saying the same thing as the previous speaker, be kept to a minimum, so that information can be presented. If there's documents or other items that you want the commissioners to consider, then please make at least five copies, so that the commissioners can have one, I can have one, and there can be another one for the public record. The meeting will conclude, it starts at six, will conclude promptly at seven thirty, which is an hour and a half. The commissioners are not going to make any decisions at this meeting. This is an information gathering meeting only for both sides to make their presentation. The commissioners already have a great deal of information that I presented to them in notebook form. They've got a copy of the application. They've got a copy of all of its comments that have been made to IDM, off of IDM's website, from all the neighbors, people around. The commissioners have invited all of the state representatives, state senators, whose area comes even close to Delaware County, to attend. They've also put IDM on notice. They're invited to attend. The applicant's been invited to attend. And I think they're going to have department heads from the county that cover this will also be there to observe and participate in this.
Okay, and I believe that setting this was partially in response to the fact that a group of us who are opposing it had, you know, requested a meeting, and rather than have private meetings with you guys, this open forum was set. But I suppose my other inquiry is that, you know, Delaware County's not that large, and there's scuttlebutt that flies around, whether it's true or not. And one of the things that our group has repeatedly heard is that farmers and others representing the pro-interest have been granted private meetings with the commissioners or with MARTA.
Ma'am, that's not, that's not true.
Okay, good, because that would not be very kosher.
With farmers, trying to educate myself on CAFOs and other things, that's what's been happening. And I have been talking to some farmers twice.
But it, so it has not been like Farm Bureau or any of these entities that we know are really pushing and supporting this? Because that really would not be very fair to the interest.
It's not, you know, it's my job as a commissioner to educate myself when some of these things come up, and that's what I'm going to do.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for your honesty. Thank you.
And I would say I have not had any meetings with any of the farmers, planning commission. I have been on Google a lot, I can tell you that, researching pros and cons. Like John said, I have now a book maybe about this big to read over the next few days also, so we are looking into both aspects of this.
Thank you.
One thing that is, he probably has something to do with that, mine is not.
Yeah, he'll need to come up to...
I've been on Google also.
Can you give your name?
My name is Fred Casher.
Good, thank you.
I've been on Google quite a bit also, and one thing it does not address is if this project is approved, it's going to financially devastate eighty percent of the people within a mile of the operation to benefit one family. It's going to line, the one family's going to become considerably more, would considerably more money in their pocket, and the rest of them are going to be ruined. And in addition to that, with their house values going down, you can lose tax money, because the valuation's going to go. And that's not considering that you're going to have to spend four million dollars on the roads. But the primary, primary concern for me to stand up was that all these people in that neighborhood, they're not going to be able to sell their house. They're going to be devalued to nothing, because none of you would move in next door to a place that you can't stand to walk outside. So that's what's going to happen. And all these, I drove in the area, and it appears that none of these people are rich. They, you know, have modest incomes, it appears, and it looks like they have put their entire life savings into their homes, and that's all they have. There's not a lot of big trucks in their driveways. There's no big boy toys around. They are just small, farm, country people that want to live out there peacefully without being confined to their, inside their house, where they can't smell the odors. I live two and a half miles away, and it's going to affect us. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
One thing we will look at is also the roads out there, what it would cost to, if we had to redo them, widen them, or build them up also.
Yes, sir.
Well, good morning. My name's Derek Wright, and I'm the treasurer, secretary treasurer of the Country Village Creekwood Neighborhood Association, and I just need a couple minutes this morning. One of the things I came to talk about today, our association's been working very closely with a number of groups here in the area, and one of the things that we are trying to address in our neighborhood is the road condition, which of course is a typical theme across the county and in the city, I understand. However, we were given a contract in the fall for one of our significant roads to be paved, one that's in pretty bad shape. I brought that contract today. Really, I'm here just to verify that this is going to be seen through to the conclusion of this particular contract, and then also to talk to you about possibly working on a paving plan for the roads in our neighborhood going forward. You know, we're not asking for everything, but we do have a significant number of homes in our subdivision, close to four hundred. It is getting older. The roads are mostly made out of concrete, and unfortunately, there are significant roads in the neighborhood that are deteriorating rapidly. We have a number of young families, young kids, that like to participate in ride-to-bike, stroll skate, things like that around the neighborhood. So I just brought the copy of the contract. I want to just talk with you about verifying.
Is that the copy of the contract I provided to you last fall?
It might have been. Is that the one that was signed by Bob? I've got copies anywhere.
Is that Tahoe or what?
It's for Sun Valley.
Sun Valley.
Sacramento, Sun Valley.
Yeah, it was supposed to be, I know Shannon, it was supposed to be last fall, and the weather, they shut down.
They ran out of fuel.
And I hope they can be at first of the spring this year, so.
Commissioners, the president of the association has reached out to Mr. Bill Walters and myself. We did provide that contract, or did get a copy of that. I talked to Mr. Jesse at the Highway Garage, and he said, yes, it did get signed too late in the year last year. Would be done this spring, so.
Excellent. Well, just one of the things that we want to do on our association is make those things public, to tell our members to value their membership. So that's why I came in this morning. Glad to see that.
This would be a good place for me to ask, because I've been, those are concrete, and they've had the tar put on top, and they're rough. Is it going to be smoothed down? I mean, are they going to take off some mill?
I don't know exactly how they're going to do it, but I can tell you, a few years ago, they did Sun Valley, which is the main, the main east-west road in the back of the neighborhood, and it is, it has held up very well so far. This is, this is Sacramento goes into Sun Valley. It's in the front, close to the five hundred. And if they, if they do what they did to the last road, it's a, it's a great start.
Okay, here it is. This is the first I've ever seen a mill.
They're going to pull, they're going to do some patching prior to asphalt.
Yeah. But I do hope that we can get that, because a lot of times, if E and B's, they do their sixty-nine road first, and then put us on the end, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name's Doug Short. I've been a Delaware County resident for fifty-nine years. And like this gentleman was just talking about his, the addition he lives in, the CAFO with the laws that are in place, or lack of laws today, the fields that are behind this, these additions today, they could put a CAFO right there, and anywhere else in the county. So a lot of people just think this is something that's way out to the boundaries. This is something that could be right in anybody's backyard. Thank you.
Thanks. Does anybody want to?
My name is Eleanor Traywick. I live at three hundred South Morrison Road in Muncie. May I make a comment about the proposed new jail? I would speak in opposition to the conversion of the former Wilson Middle School to a new five-hundred-bed jail. I feel that this is, this process has been done too quickly, without enough time for public comment. I question whether this is the best use of up to fifty thousand, up to fifty million dollars of Delaware County taxpayers' money. I'm concerned that the location on South Tillotson Avenue is less accessible to the public than locations within the city of Muncie. I feel very strongly that Delaware County does not need a new five-hundred-bed jail that will more than double the size of the current jail. We should be focusing on treatment for drug users and on other alternatives to incarceration. Certainly, converting a former school to a jail is bad optics for the county. It would turn the metaphor of the school-to-prison pipeline into a literal reality. I'm asking the commissioners to please provide more transparency in this process, and also to allow more time for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to recess?
So move.
Everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
To recess. Thank you.